Let me call the November 17th business meeting of our borough council to order. Let's move to the ledger of amendments. Amendments.
I'm glad to be here.
This is due to the United States Department of Public Health. It is a valid which tends. Well, I'm a patient. I know that. You as well. The liberty and justice for all. You. Can I give a ride? We call it all.
Absolutely. Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Annapolis.
Here.
Council Member Barbara Porter.
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady.
Here.
Council Member Cindy Rikers.
Here.
Council Member Bob Weisberg.
Here.
Council Member Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
All right. Are there any agenda additions or changes to consider?
So I have three for council to consider. Under item nine F, currently titled appointment of Samantha Bryant to Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee. I realize that actually should say consideration of resolution 202230 to appoint Samantha Bryant as Borough Liaison to Burkhymmer. The second proposed change to the agenda I have is to add an action item nine I, consideration of resolution 2022-31 to appoint Burkhymmer as delinquent tax collector for EIT and LST. And both of those resolutions are in the packet. They just weren't properly noted here on the agenda. And then finally, under item fifteen, I'd like to add for council to consider discussing an executive session, a matter regarding litigation with a Borough Contractor.
And can I get a motion to make the changes as stated by? Oh, I'm going.
All right. I'm going to amend the agenda. Item nine F to lead consideration of resolution 2230 to appoint Samantha Bryant as the liaison to Montgomery County. Is that right?
Um, for the.
To Burkhymmer. To Burkhymmer. The liaison to Burkhymmer's tax collector. Um, to add item nine I, consideration of resolution 2222-31 to appoint Burkhymmer as delinquent tax collector. And to add an item to agenda item number fifteen to considering executive session in addition to that matter to write litigation with a Borough. Potential litigation.
So, sir. Second, let's leave any discussion of the agenda changes. All right, we are voting to make the changes. All those in favor to make the changes? Any opposed? Okay. And there's the change. Uh, residents comments. So I do have some comments. So we've received a lot of resident comments about the parking proposals which we discussed on November 3rd, which is where we are this evening. So first of all, you can see a lot of the information that it's coming out of the years that we've been working on this issue. The parking study itself done by Nelson Nygaard. Uh, the agendas and minutes from the Parking Study Task Force, which was the Citizen and Borough Council Group. I was looking at those recommendations. The agendas and minutes from the Parking Committee at Borough Council. Those are all on a webpage on the Borough site. If you search for parking will come up titled Ad hoc Parking, Residential and Guest Parking with those changes. So this evening, we're going to be discussing changes to our proposal based on resident concerns and based on the discussions of the Parking Committee at their last meeting. Uh, there's no vote on tonight's agenda to advertise the ordinance. So actual policy changes will come through down the line. Uh, and public comment is of course welcome on this topic as on any topic. What we've done did so three minutes as we. All right. Uh, let's move on to the mayor's viewpoints.
Um, just, just a very couple of things this morning. Um, just this afternoon, Montgomery County has issued a code blue for our area, starting at 9:00 PM tonight and going through, going until Monday morning. So that means it's going to be extra cold and, and please don't leave your pets outside. And, uh, and if you need any resources, if anybody is in need of resources, uh, uh, the county has resources available to make sure everybody stays safe. Um, check on your neighbors to make sure, you know, if you see anything funny, that, you know, make sure they're okay. If you need the police to do a wellness check, we can do that as well. So, uh, that's the first thing. Uh, secondly, uh, we're going into Thanksgiving week and this is my last opportunity to just wish everyone a happy holiday. I am thankful for all the volunteers who worked so hard to make this borough run. Um, and I just want to say thank you to everyone for their hard work on all the committees and Borough Council and, and everything to try and do best by our friends and neighbors. Um, I also want to give a thank you to the members of our police force, including Mike Vernaccio, who's been holding down the fort while we, uh, while we search for a, our next chief. So I just want to give thanks to all those who, who are working so hard to, to make Narborough the best place it can be.
Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. All right, let's move on to public comments. So I'll start in the room here. So I'll start with the first row. So three minutes, just speaking name and address.
I'm Adam Kazem from 156 Marion Avenue. I'm going to be speaking about the Sabine property. Narborough owns a wonderful resource with Sabine property. In addition to the Sabine property, we in Narborough will have another park at three Elmwood, almost two acres. The future options for the Sabine property are using it. The full area is a park or creating a park with a portion of the property being used for a commercial building. This building would provide rent to Narborough. I support using a portion of the Sabine property for a building and also creating a large park. The Borough Council must decide what is in the best long-term interest of the residents of Narborough. This decision by the council must not rely on just the neighbors, must not rely on just those losing their leases within the Sabine buildings, and not just rely on the loudest voices. The council makes decisions to create the best future for our community. The transformation of the Sabine property will be costly. The cost of demolition is over a million dollars. Creating a cohesive park will be very costly. There will be continued maintenance costs for a large park. This costs a lot of money, which the burden will be on all the residents of Narborough. Using a portion of the property for a building does take into account the concerns of the immediate neighbors. The building will be fronted and located on Montgomery Avenue away from the residential neighbors. A building on Montgomery Avenue provides Narborough with a land lease. This lease provides needed and necessary money to assist with the cost of a large park at the Sabine property. This is an opportunity to be smart about both the open spaces and the financial future of Narborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn to the second round. Public comment?
Yeah, John Axon, 400 North Park. Um, it seems like you're taking the third step at the waste reallocation fees. I, I, I see that now it's $400 for residential properties and 295 for commercial property and a hundred dollars for, um, multi-apartment buildings. I still don't see where a hundred dollars is a fair number for apartment buildings in comparison to the household 400 and even less for a commercial building. Regarding the parking program, the Nelson Nygaard study was taken over two days in December of 2016. So I don't see how that could be representative of the problems that we have today. And I don't believe, I was told by the Parking Committee to come here because you're going to determine the fees for the parking permits. There shouldn't be any fee really for that permit, non nominal amount to be fair to all of us. It's part, parking, you're going to make more problems by creating all these intricacies. And then regards to the park at Sabine Park, um, there should be a full-length park there. We will bear the burden of the cost of the park. We have kids and children and multiple, um, athletic programs that need these fields to, for our kids to compete. Okay, if you need to put a little building on a corner, if you, if, if it's financially feasible, I'll well and do, but there should be a full length and that doesn't cost a lot. You pick up the gravel and you plant grass. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like it for the room. It's fine.
Sure, just our usual, just everyone has the Zoom protocol. If you're on Zoom, I'm allowed to make a public comment. Either please use the raise hand function or literally raise your hand. I will call on you and you will get a pop on your screen giving you an opportunity to unmute. Uh, at the three-minute mark, you will be re-muted. Uh, so is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make public comment? I see no public comment on Zoom.
All right. Good, we started from the beginning. We received public comment. All right. We have receiving more than half the answers. Hopefully, that covers what she was going to say. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Under the Borough Council, through the consent agenda items.
Uh-oh. Ha. Um, I'm a co-host because I'm going to be sharing my screen later. So obviously the owl decided to drop out on us.
I see that.
Yeah.
Oh, let me text them.
No, I think they know. It, it was making booping noises in the room, but you can, but I think they know.
Okay.
Because that's just Samantha get up, so.
But, yeah.
We had problems with it Tuesday morning during the Parking Committee meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I I don't know, Zoom, I, I think they keep doing updates that then.
I had the update before I was allowed to get on tonight.
Yeah, see, and I haven't had to do that and I, I've been really surprised because I've been in Zoom a bunch. Yeah, Fred texted me, said, yeah, they are pausing the meeting for the moment. They worked on that. While they're doing that, I'm going to go fill up my water glass. Forgot to do that. No, it's like they always say, technology is wonderful until it isn't.
Yeah, exactly.
It's just like, hi.
Yeah, it was nerve, and then at first my audio wasn't great. Oh, there we go.
Yeah, I've had that happen before too and I'm not sure what that is.
It, it fixes that.
Hi, everyone. My, um, my laptop battery died. I thought it would plug in and it was stopped quite a way in there.
Oh. God.
I'll need to get the TV back on in the room here and we will resume the meeting. I'll tell the folks here in the meeting, it wouldn't be a council meeting if my computer didn't do something fine to us, so. As is tradition.
Let's just.
I think we are almost there.
All right, well, we do have, we do have, we do have Zoom and the recording going.
Okay, do we, so we have audio right now?
Yeah.
So Barbara and Andrew, you can hear us?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
Do you hear us?
Not at this time. So you'll have to. So are you okay with proceeding here and without the, without your own video? You can, you can raise something audibly uh, if you want to make a point and we'll let you know. We're still working again, the video back on, so I'll let you know uh, any situations.
Okay.
See us?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. It sounds like everybody's okay with the meeting proceeding. Obviously, so there we go. All right, so the last action that was taken, there was a motion to for the consent agenda items, to consider the consent agenda items was seconded. So that's.
I seconded, I seconded that, but I think that was right when the thing.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, so I think Cindy officially is credited as seconding it, but nonetheless.
I thought Cindy made the motion.
Cindy made the motion, all right, modesty.
And I seconded, I thought, but I couldn't tell.
Is there any discussion of the consent agenda?
I have a question. Um, there was no, um, formal resignation from Jim Spear, a letter or something. And so I'm just wondering, do we know what effective date that's going to be as of what he wants? I, I just had expected there would be something in the packet. Um, unless it got added within the last, you know, couple of hours, but I didn't see it. So I just wanted to make sure we know what we're voting on.
Communication with him that I believe it would be effective January 1st, that would be that the resignation would be effective January 1st.
Okay, so that's.
That's Samantha.
Yeah, he had sent an email to me, but it contained other Borough business. And so I couldn't just plug that into the packet, but that is my understanding as well. So my apologies to council, that wasn't included in there.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions?
No question, but can I just thank Jim Spear for his many, many years of dedicated service on the Borough Commission?
Yes, thank you.
Do we know how many years?
How many years, Jim?
Since 2012.
A decade.
Yeah, decade of service.
And his continued work on the Shade Tree Commission, the Narborough Association.
You know what? We have a long agenda as of this. Everything Jim does for this borough will be here till tomorrow.
Excellent point.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim. All right. Uh, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda? Raise your hands. Any opposed? All right, action nine A, 650 Montgomery.
Um, I move that council consider adopting resolution 2022-26 for approval of 650 Montgomery Avenue amended final plan.
Second.
All right. Want to, please, sir?
Sure, I'm happy to, and I see the representative of the applicant is here as well. Just the history of this matter, it's the third time this plan is back before council for approval. First time was the revolution 2020. Um, and as recall, this is a 25-unit apartment mixed-use building at 650 Montgomery Avenue. Uh, the original plan called for a wall that council accepted, wasn't completely happy with, but they, you know, that they accepted it. Um, due to some changes in potential tenants, they came back for a, a second change of that plan, which made that sort of an at-grade patio and expanded the landscaping, but the building itself was remained the same. I do believe there was a one apartment spot removed, but still apartment compliant. That was again approved by council with the approval of both the planning commissions. Uh, due to tenant changes again, uh, there is a third amendment to that patio wall area, um, which I'd let the applicant maybe provide more details, but according to the engineer letter, uh, summary of that is sort of a hybrid between the original plan and the amended plan uh, with a mix of elevated and at-grade patios along the meeting house lane frontage. Um, the approved retaining wall will remain near the intersection of Montgomery Avenue with a staircase and ADA accessible lift providing a connection to the at-grade patio. Uh, and the parking spaces at above the building have been better configured or reconfigured to better accommodate the building entrance. Uh, so it's sort of a, the building itself remains the same, but around the building, surrounding patio walls are amended. And that's due to again, um, different tenant fixtures and needs. The resolution for approval was essentially the same as the last one uh, that was approved, um, as relevant. Um, uh, accepting the changes to the, to the plan. And you think that's an accurate summary of very much of the, you know, happy to walk everybody through. If you'd like to.
Not sure that's going to be necessary unless, I think the council wants to. This is a relatively minor change and we've discussed similar changes in the past.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, it's just almost like the corner, the, the corners of, no, 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 what'd you call?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
But look, hold into the.
Because I was so opposed to the wall at the beginning, so, yeah.
So here we go. This is, this is round one. This was a wall all the way through. Staircase over there. Round two was we brought this to grade and we just sloped this ramp up all the way to here.
Okay.
Now that we're back at a multi-tenant, multi-tenant configuration, we can't have a slope here because it means secondary means of eating rest on the patio level. So basically taking what was the staircase over here and shifting into here.
And this is the patio.
This is still totally at-grade, totally walkable onto a meeting house, one, two, three different means of eating pedestrian access right onto Montgomery. Flight rack is still there. This doesn't, this never changed in the beginning. This here is the same as this, which is the same as this.
Good. All right.
Okay, thank you.
And it was reviewed by the Planning Commission, I think, just this week.
Yeah, there hasn't been no serious concerns raised against anybody who's.
Correct, and, and any of the minor concerns or not concerns, but minor points of change in, in our Borough Engineer's Letter are able to be addressed prior to the plan accord. And that would be.
All right. Any other questions from council? All right, uh, let's vote on resolution 2226 to approve the amended plan for 650 Montgomery. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right. Uh, action nine B, EIT.
Oh, under the Borough Council, adopt ordinance 1051 for EIT.
For a second?
Oh, a second.
Thank you. Uh, discussion.
Sure, so we found lots of discussion on it. Uh, ultimately, this is a half percent, uh, EIT. The goal of it being to provide, as we'll do in our ordinance and a couple of items here, to provide property tax relief via a home sit exemption, as well as to find Borough infrastructure projects in the future. Um, so, um, you know, I'm grateful to council for giving consideration to it and and if there are any remaining questions, have me to talk through it, but we've talked a lot the last five or six months about it.
And the effective date is going to be January 1st. And we will be notifying residents about this and the, uh, the LST, the home sit exemption, all of these tax changes.
Yes.
The ordinance was properly advertised and properly submitted to the law library for review and has been on possession of Borough public displays.
Comments?
Yeah, I mean, I know it's probably going to be covered in a later item, but I, I assume at the same time, we're not talking about changing the millage to property tax.
Right.
Millage rate.
That will, that will come up during the budget discussion, but right, the property tax millage. The, the, the millage that is specifically for property tax will not change. We are going to be changing the way that, we're going to be applying a separate solid waste fee, which.
Which isn't a tax.
Which isn't a tax, right, that's a fee.
Understood.
So yes. Okay, we are not increasing the property tax millage.
Or lower.
Or lower.
I know, I think it's subjective.
People are going to see some changes to their, to their tax, tax form, but we are not raising or lowering the property tax millage. I believe that's accurate.
Thanks.
Any other comments about the EIT? All right. Let's vote on approving ordinance 1051 establishing an EIT. All those in favor? Any opposed? And it's. Nine C, the LST. If you want.
Oh, I will not move.
Okay. Because I'm opposed to it, so it seems.
Yeah, sorry, the motion states are just, we just go like an alphabet order. They're not, they're not any intentional.
Someone else will have to move now.
I move the Borough Council to adopt ordinance 1052 for local service tax.
Sir, a second? Someone, okay. All right. Discussion of the LST.
Um, so Lord Mary's School District has a $5 LST. Uh, this proposal, this ordinance would implement a $47 Borough LST. It's an annual tax charge to anyone who works in the Borough. And there's an exemption for anyone who makes $12,000 or less a year.
It is also true for you.
Right, also exempt EIT, yeah.
And again, this ordinance was properly advertised, sent to the law library, has been on possession of Borough for public representation.
Thank you. Any other?
I just took an opportunity to say, I was just taking an opportunity to say why I oppose it. I, and it's not that, it's not that I oppose the LST, I oppose the amount. When, when, the way this works is that when you get your payroll check and you're in, you're, you know, you're an employee in Narborough, once a year, there's a $5 deduction from the school district on your paycheck. And so I get that, my wife gets that, anyone else who gets a paycheck that lives in Narborough pays $5 to the school board. Somebody who say works a minimum wage job, maybe earning $12,001 in their minimum wage job, will also get that same $5 deduction from their paycheck annually. Um, for the Borough, Narborough to now tack on $47 annually to a person who's earning, say, $12,001, I think it's rather, I, I don't think it's right because I think that we have probably have a hundred, we have, we have many minimum wage employees within the Borough of Narborough doing all kinds of different jobs. Probably earn a little more than $12,000. If, if, that's, that's almost five to six hours of labor for that person. Um, it's just to pay the Narborough LST. So I'm not opposed to the LST, I'm just opposed to the amount. If we want to like actually formalize an LST and charge $5 like the school district does, like I could see that being reasonable, like then, so then a person who's earning minimum wages, like kicking in maybe a fraction of their first hour of employment, but not their first seven hours of employment in the Borough of Narborough. You know, like, just, and that's in addition to all the other deductions that are made by, you know, like social security, state, federal taxes, so. That's, that's why I find it distasteful. So that's, that's why I find it distasteful.
So, I have a comment as well. I was, I was unfortunately not able to attend the meeting where we moved this heard advertised, so I did not have anything to say about it at the time. I did listen to the meeting, I thought Bob's comments were important and persuasive. And I would not have voted that, move it forward. But in addition, I apologize to two other independent reasons that I'm not a fan of this tax. The first is there are a couple of things in here, yeah, I would have mentioned them last month, but that I don't actually know how to interpret them as drafted. For example, business, enterprise activity, profession, et cetera, that is conducted for profit or ordinarily conducted for profit, which would seem to include a nonprofit that engages in the business that would ordinarily be conducted for profit, and I think that would sweep Get Cafe within this, and I'm not comfortable asking those employees to pay this tax. The second is that in terms of the definition under imposition of tax rate, that basically just sort of is generally where it would apply. Upon the privilege of engaging in occupation with a primary place of employment within Narber Borough during the tax year, each person who exercises such privilege for any length of time during any tax year, it not clear to me what occupation job would sweep within it if somebody was a Thailand job that lasts for a month and that's where they're primarily employed? Are they expected to report this, a contractor who's working on something for three months? So that's not really clear to me. I'm not really comfortable passing something if I can't tell what activity it actually brings within it. And that, so that was my first objection. My second objection is this is intended to raise about $25,000 a year, I believe estimated. And as I went through it, I saw there are so many administratively burdensome things as to be reported quarterly. There are already exemptions that need to be tracked, that need to be filed annually, that need to be followed up on, make sure that they're legitimate. There's a need to do a lot of corrata calculations because employment doesn't always last for a year, maybe the whole quarter. Special rules for concurrent employment, trying to figure out, there's a whole schedule of gradating, like graduating priority of claim depending on the situs of the tax, like where the employment happens. Self-employed individuals have to report every quarter. They're going to have to pay, I assume, Burkhymmer to administer and enforce this, I think it will also take, it will be ungood, it will take a lot of administrative time, because it will be closed cases, and then it will be people complaining, and it will be people who don't, who don't report because it's just kind of burdensome. And all that for $25 hours a year, it's not really a policy that makes a lot of sense to me, so I'm probably against it.
John, do you want to address the question whether a nonprofit would, or any of the questions raised by...
Well, I think it's still a bit more intricate as to whether or not it's a nonprofit or not. These definitions were taken directly from the Local Tax Enabling Act upon the recommendation as all of the processes and the ordinance from Burkhymmer, upon their review to keep it consistent with the other municipalities that had this tax, because they do administer it. And then there is that Montgomery County Tax Collection Committee that reviews any of the issues and appeals related to this ordinance. My understanding is that if you are a, even if you're a nonprofit activity, if you're doing an activity that is outside of that nonprofit, it would be taxable. So I can't, I think it's a lack of issue as to whether or not a nonprofit would apply. If there's a nonprofit doing profit activities, for example, Borough and 2017, in those municipalities, it would be a different. And that would be up to the determination of Burkhymmer and the Tax Collection Committee to determine if, you know, if there's a deal on that grounds, whether or not it's taxable then.
Rand, do you know, are you aware of Get Cafe?
I'm aware of it.
So what do you, in your opinion, would they be lawful or...
I mean, I guess the question is, what are they paying taxes on now? I mean, if right now, are they paying taxes on their income for work? It is sort of a hybrid because of the service they provide, even though it is for a nonprofit purpose. I'm not sure if they have a foundation set up, I'm not sure if it's all business activity. I would, I would think that if their, their income is primarily, or those workers are primarily serving that nonprofit element, it'd be up to them to determine how to classify them in force. And again, I think if you work for a nonprofit, you still pay taxes on what you make as a worker. Regardless.
You've both made compelling points. And not to belabor or underscore what I think is compelling of each, I would like to ask Samantha about the administrative burden of $25,000 to her point. Is it, is it...
There's no administrative burden.
You don't perceive administrative burden?
So Burkhymmer charges a percentage, but I think it's like 1% that they charge, plus, I mean, if they have to deal with, that's just for the standard, and if they have to deal with people who are not paying their taxes for whatever reason, it's, there's more expenses there. But if it, it's 1% of the standard collections. And I think another factor that, you know, is one of the reasons we brought this forward is because it's a very common tax in Pennsylvania, I think, that all municipalities have it.
Yeah, I mean, if I had to, you know, completely rehash what we've talked for the last four months, you know, we have very limited opportunities to, to diversify our revenue base. We're incredibly property tax dependent. This is one of our few avenues the state gives us to diversify, you know, our revenue stream. You know, a lot of these concerns are, you know, the first, you know, in this process I've heard about them. You know, obviously, the, all the regulatory things that go with the $5 school district one, and if people are already having to do, and they would, you know, be the same whether we have, you know, ours, ours as well. So, you know, I mean, I think, again, I mean, our, you know, our choices, our choices are limited in terms of raising revenue, and this is one of the options that we have, which is why we, why we pursue it. And, you know, I would argue that, you know, I certainly understand the concerns about the amount. I would say that people who work in the borough who don't necessarily live here benefit from borough services the same way that residents do. And again, hence why, you know, there's an opportunity to let the tax on those folks.
So I would say that, my understanding is that the administrative burden on the taxpayer does change, that you have to withhold differently if it's $5 versus if it's...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not the individual who's going to do the withholding, it's your, you know, it's your payroll that's not doing yet.
Yeah, I was, like, to make cement this point, like, look, we have a payroll service in our business, it's just, it's just automatic, like, the payroll service puts it in, if you have 100 employees, it's going to be done 100 times, it's automatic. What bothers me is that we're sipping from the income, the meager income of some people who are making literally very little money, who are going to basically contribute six to eight hours of their labor to give the borough of Narber $50. Like, I just think it's unconscionable. I got behind the EIT, I came to see the EIT because of the need to diversify the tax base, I understand how, you know, I understand that it's a nice, it's, there's some rational, it's rational. I wish the Commonwealth would, like, raise the threshold of the minimum taxable amount from $12,000, say, to like $8,000, I think would be more equitable, like, I think, but I think that's something to be up to the Commonwealth, and hopefully with a new leadership in this Commonwealth level, we can get that to change. But, and I'm all for diversifying tax base, but sipping $50 from someone who's making $12,050 from the kids or who are, you know, it's just unconscionable to me, I just, I think it's wrong. If we want to do it, like, if we want to institute this administratively so it's in place, so that we have, we can go to it if we ever really need it, then let's do $50. Let's not do $50. That's, that's just...
I would have raised it earlier, but I was on Finance Administration Committee, and when, when we did, when we did visit this issue at the last meeting, I objected for the same reason then. So I did raise my concern as soon as I was aware of the issue. If council were to pick a different amount for the LST, would it require re-advertising the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, well, then we can't, then your choice is unfortunate, there you are.
Well, you gotta have to be another year before they're going to change the ordinance to your first year. All right, who hasn't spoken? So Barbara?
Yeah, I had a question. Michelle mentioned that there's quarterly reporting required. Manager Bryant, could you speak to that? I, is it like required of individuals?
Oh, like I said earlier, it's not required of individuals, it's whoever, whoever a company, whoever's responsible for payroll at a company, whether it's an employee or an outside entity, that would be, could be like any other withholding.
With due respect, it's far from self-employed individuals, and I think we have a fair number of them in the borough, so yes, so many others.
Same as any other withholding, yeah.
Yeah.
They have to report quarterly. And there are some self-employed individuals who have very, you know...
All right, let's, let's try to...
Is the process different, though, if you're already paying $5 for the process than if you're paying $47?
Well, that's a question.
There's a threshold.
If I'd known that concern in advance at the meeting, I certainly could have asked for a counter, out of more definitive answer on that.
There is, like, it's, the process is different if you're only paying $5. It's an annual, I believe, as opposed to a, either a quarterly or weekly for Get Cafe.
I mean, of course, another thing with this too, is if council changes the number, you know, the, you know, our, the 2023 budget is based upon that number, and again, and in the grand scheme of the borough, is $25,000 that much money, no. But in the scheme of the decisions we made for the 2023 budget, yes, I mean, we would have to substantially change something council previously did, we'd have to, you know, back off on something to the $25,000. So not to say we can't do it, it's just that, you know, kind of, this is like, like, we have to advertise the budget tonight to make our deadline, you know, get it done without having a special meeting, you know, in the hall in time.
I would definitely agree, it would have been better to have this discussion earlier. Anybody else who hasn't spoken?
I mean, you're saying the budget can go forward, if this is voted down, the budget won't have to be changed.
Yeah.
Do you require a special meeting?
No, just you all tonight here at the table would have to decide on the fly what you're going to cut from the budget to make that money up, or you're going to eat it out of fund balance.
I'd be in favor of cutting $25,000 in cuts.
Well, that's, this is, that's a separate...
Well, I'm mentioning it because it's part of the discussion. We're being, being told that unless we vote yes on this, we're going to have a budget problem. So I'm saying, here, we're going to...
We will have to, we will have to take that into account when it comes time to deal with the budget. Either it will result in, we're already projecting that we're going to spend down some of the fund balance, we need to be spending down more, or we would need to find cost savings on the budget.
You would be, as we talked about the budget, the fund balance that we're using up is for non-recurring expenses, whereas this would be recurring revenue, so we'd be creating a $25,000 structural deficit otherwise.
Any other, Cynthia, did you want to say something?
But there are, the budget, but there are some potential changes in the projected budget that we could shift that $25,000.
It's certainly within our power, but that's a discussion for later.
No, but it would inform my...
I think, I mean, I actually think it's a discussion for now, because we're talking about taking that money out of pockets of people who made very little money versus, you know, like sort of maybe tightening our guts a little bit for the sake of the borough, for the sake of those ladies who live in the borough, or raising the millage layer a tiny drop.
We can't, I mean, we can't change, well, I mean, we can't really change the millage at this point, unfortunately, because we'd have to advertise that. Well, I don't know, I mean, I should say that, John, council would have enough time. If you wanted to change the property tax millage, we'd have to approve that tonight so we could advertise in time for council.
My preference would be not to increase the property tax millage, I think that it's going to be a lot simpler to...
Yeah, I would rather, I would agree, I would rather cut an expense if you want to forego this tax, yeah.
Yeah. All right, since people are asking for this, I will throw it out there that I believe we can cut the second parking controller that is in the budget. I believe that we are, based on what we're hearing from the community, we're not going to be significantly increasing our parking enforcement. And as a result, the second parking controller is less necessary, and we can, you know, if it turns out later on next year that everybody is recovered from the pandemic fully, and there's two new buildings on Havre that are generating a lot of traffic, and it's an issue, this is a, we'll visit online, but I was going to propose this anyway, that spending on it could be removed from the budget.
Could I ask a question about that, too? What's present in the budget right now is for a 35-hour-a-week parking controller. When, we had a brief period earlier this year when we had one full-time parking controller and a part-time parking controller, and the reason for that was so that we could have coverage of the meters on Saturdays, some coverage of, there are some two-hour zones where the coverage goes to 8:00 PM, so you could have some more evening coverage. Is there, if we don't have that, and that was before we talked at all about increasing the enforcement period, so is there room in the budget if we wanted to have a part-time controlling officer, yeah, controller, enforcement officer with the not having the LST? And, and is that even necessary? I kind of leave that up to you, Manager Bryant, do we need, do we feel that we need the part-time? I mean, at one time, we did feel that that was important to have this extra flexibility to have some enforcement in the hours that just don't work for someone who's working a regular, you know, eight to four, Monday through Friday.
I mean, yeah, I think the borough would certainly benefit from it, but I do think there were some valid, you know, equities, right, where concerns from council about the nature of a part-time job versus a full-time job, and, you know, what sort of employer we want to be. So I would say this, I mean, would there be a benefit having a part-timer? Absolutely. Is it something the borough, I mean, I don't necessarily want to speak for the police department or the mayor or anything like that, but in my opinion, is, is an additional parking controller absolutely needed right now?
I think Barbara was also asking about costs. I think that going from a 35-hour parking controller with benefits to a 20-hour parking controller without benefits would be $25,000, I mean, they'd be in the same ballpark. So if we were to make those two changes, it would be pretty similar. I still don't like the idea of a part-time parking controller, but I think it would be a wash.
Right. And that's not my first choice either, but, you know, if that, I guess I'm, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of if we see that there's really a need for that, that it would, you know, maybe we're back to considering that again, that, you know, a part-time enforcement.
So, nothing's to say we couldn't put the LST back in next year at a reduced price, which means it wouldn't be completely structural, because some of it could come back. I mean, I'm not, I understand the point you're making, Manager Bryant, but I mean, it's not necessarily a permanent decision here, and I suspect we would have voted for a lower rate if that were a possibility tonight.
That's what it sounds like.
Right, so...
I mean, I just want to emphasize to council, like, you know, this is not, I mean, obviously Borough Council means shouldn't be, you know, pre-scripted kabuki theater affairs, but, you know, these sort of significant changes, obviously, I was not prepared tonight to discuss this topic and answer the concerns and questions raised. And, you know, we've already paid hundreds of dollars for advertising in those ordinance. You know, now we're going to have to go back and make change, like, there's staff time that was spent on this, and now it's meant to be spent again. And I just, I just would encourage members of council, like, obviously, if you have concerns, I want to address them, and I want to solve them, but it really hurts my ability to do that when at the last... to do that when at the last possible decision point we bring them up. And council as a whole, I'm not, I'm not saying, obviously, all of council has concerns based on all the shit we're here tonight, and a council of misgivings, it just would have been better to know them a month ago than now.
Yeah, this is not to say anything about you, Bob, you did raise your.
Not saying anything about, not saying anything about Michelle. It sounds like council as a whole tonight has some misgivings, you know, about this. And just for future borough business, I mean, this is just standard municipal operating practice, this is not how these things are supposed to go, and I just wanna be very clear about that.
And I appreciate you for, Fred, on the fly, thinking of a solution. I just wanna say, like, in defense of all of us, that we saw the EIT coming for a year. We've all had a long time to think about and discuss it. This, this LST, literally, it came blindside in the minute, like, I didn't know that it's just being discussed in finance administration. It's never something pre-introduced earlier on before we were asked to look at it. We'd never discussed the amount or anything like that, or I would have been clear.
And I apologize for that. I mean, you make a really compelling case that other municipalities all have this, it seems like standard operating procedure. And to speak of myself, you know, over the last two weeks, we have gotten probably a hundred emails about parking and, and what that five, it wouldn't be five thousand, what the burden of that additional fee would be. So I will say, I heard you loud and clear about, because you were very clear with your objections, but those, I mean, I, I wouldn't venture to guess how many emails we've all received, but talking about that guest fee did have me reconsider what you're thinking about. I mean, and to hear you both talk, I do completely appreciate, this is not helpful, but I've heard the emails from residents saying, this is a financial burden. So to hear you say it again, I'm taking it.
All right. So what would be, do we want a motion table? Do we want to have a vote?
Well, you have a motion on the table, so you can just vote yes or no on it.
Okay.
It's, I mean, it's up you all, you can either vote on the motion on the table.
If you could unwind it, there's a person who made the motion. I'm not, I'm not gonna unwind it, let's just go. Is there any other discussion at this point? Okay. We are voting on resolution ten fifty-two for the LST. Oh, sorry, it's.
Ordinance, ten fifty-two, sorry.
Ordinance ten fifty-two, right, it's not a resolution, ordinance ten fifty-two for the LST. All those in favor of passing the ordinance? All those opposed? Okay, motion fails. Let's move on to ten D, the homestead exemption.
I move that borough council adopt ordinance ten fifty-three and resolutions twenty-two, twenty-seven for homestead exemption.
Okay.
My second.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. All right, homestead exemption. Sorry, that's.
I would point out that obviously the homestead exemption would have been paid, or could have been paid money from the local services tax, or in addition to the EIT, but, but usually it's paid from local services tax. Just to clarify that real quick.
The local services tax.
Well, in this case, it's always, it's always the EIT that.
This is definitely coming from the EIT, but local services tax would have been.
Local services tax, the specific reason for it is real estate tax reduction that's provided, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure finances, but if that made an impact, I just wanna make it aware, if, if that's how it was.
No, I mean, it's all fungible from, both the EIT and the local services tax could be used to offset.
Correct.
Just can't be property.
It can be both, I'm not sure how it's, it's budgeted, but the local services tax can only be used for a few items, one of them being real estate tax reduction, so.
We promised to use twenty-five percent of it for police, private medical expenses.
We, when we, when we discussed.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, Michelle.
Then we were going to be using EIT in the future. Should we come back to the LST? We can point out that it could be used for homestead exemption, for, thank you. Don't think that, all right, do you?
If you, if I had known that, I would make my argument a bit stronger.
Is that gonna affect anything? I mean, I believe that the, the EIT.
You certainly use EIT for anything, including, including.
Homestead exemption.
Real estate tax reduction purposes. So I, I just wanna make sure that the budget didn't account for.
It did not.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're all good.
Thank you.
Thank you, though.
Scare us for a minute.
Yeah. So the, as discussed, the purposes will provide about two hundred dollars a year in property tax relief to borough property owners who qualify for homestead exemption. Talking to the county about it, they've agreed that to save hassle for them as well as for borough residents. Anyone who has already applied this year for the school district's homestead exemption will get the Norbrook one, and in future years it'll work the same way, because you have to apply for the school district one before the municipal one each year. So anyone who, you know, does that. And in terms of notification, the school district is already required to notify anyone who is eligible for the homestead, who has not currently claimed it, that they're eligible for it. So everyone will get a, you know, everyone already is, and will continue to get direct notice in the mail to sign up for the homestead exemption if they have not.
Probably have done so, we did it sooner after moving in, but I suspect everyone.
Yeah, we already have about, about a thousand properties in the borough signed up, and that would, that's, I don't know the exact number eligible, but I would expect that's pretty close to all the properties that are eligible.
All right, any more discussion about the homestead exemption? All right, let's vote for tax relief. All those in favor of ordinance ten fifty-three for homestead exemption? Any opposed? Okay. All right, nine E, Burkhymmer as collector.
Can I amend this?
Yeah, well, make a motion.
I move that borough council adopt resolution twenty-two, twenty-eight for appointment of Burkhymmer as EIT collector.
All right, so which, is it, is it still two resolutions, or are we only doing one?
I think it just needs to be the one, since we're not doing the LST. Actually, the way it should, sorry, the way it should be worded is consideration of resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven to appoint Burkhymmer, to keep the numbering in order.
Okay.
To withdraw.
I will withdraw and say I move that borough council adopt resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven for appointment of Burkhymmer as EIT collector.
Is there a second?
Michelle. Second.
All right, thank you. I just wanna check, are we sure that's the right number?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
All right, it will be twentys, okay. Right, so Burkhymmer is, is the EIT collector for the whole county, negotiatorate with the county, with all the values in the county, so this is.
We don't have a choice in who the EIT collector is, yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, we're voting on appointing Burkhymmer as EIT collector, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, social justice.
Yeah, we can do it right now, actually. So, sorry, point of order, sorry, this is, I did practice with the agenda, I didn't, I thought it was supposed to be done on the motion sheet, but for item nine C, in addition to that ordinance, council needs to approve a, a resolution for the, for the homestead exemption as well. So the ordinance sets up the homestead exemption, the resolution actually specifies how much it is, so we actually do need a motion as well, and this'll get our numbering back on track of resolutions. The resolution twenty-two, twenty-eight, that would be for the homestead exemption.
Which would be the amount of twenty thousand five hundred for the home.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to pass, or for, to consider a resolution to set the homestead exemption at twenty thousand five hundred?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. I'll just note that the number of twenty thousand five hundred is there, so the refund is about, she is a little over two hundred dollars, it's the closest we could get to make it two hundred dollars for all of them. Any other discussion? Okay, we're gonna vote on making the homestead exemption twenty thousand five hundred, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay, so now, we're gonna go back to nine F, which has been changed. Someone like to make the amended nine F motion? Michelle, you've got it now, right?
Well, apparently that was before, that was like two minutes ago.
Someone, someone like to move that we consider resolution twenty-two dash thirty to point Samantha Bryant.
Be twenty-two, twenty-nine.
I have a, okay.
So the consideration, the consideration of resolution twenty, twenty-two, twenty-nine to appoint Samantha Bryant as borough liaison to Burkhymmer.
Okay. Does anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay, three seconds.
Second.
Okay, right. Samantha, you wanna?
I'm just pretty straightforward, someone from the borough has to be designated as the person who's gonna deal with Burkhymmer for us, and as borough treasurer, it seemed like I would be the best person.
Okay. Discussion? All right, we're gonna vote on appointing Manager Bryant to be the borough liaison to Burkhymmer. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, two hands. All right, nine G.
I move that borough, that borough council adopt ordinance number ten fifty-four for debt for three Elmwood purchase and line of credit in the event of emergency building repairs.
Second, all right, discussion.
Sure, so PFL reached out to various banks about getting us, you know, rates for those proposals. Given the structure of both of the debt, given that for the three Elmwood debt, we're almost immediately gonna pay half of the principal off when we get the DSCNR grant, and given that for the line of credit, we may or may not ever end up using it, that did reduce the number of banks that were willing to make proposals on it. FNB Newtown did make a proposal to us that myself and PFL thought was reasonable. They're proposing for the three Elmwood purchase and interest rate of four point nine five percent, and, you know, that's just, you know, you've heard, I'm sure we've all heard about interest rate increases from the Fed. PFL talked a bit to us about this, that when they came and talked to us. And then for the line of credit, it'll be a five point six five percent, because that's a non-taxable debt. So, you know, I certainly recommend in favor of it, and happy to take any questions or concerns from council about it.
What are you here for, Bob?
Oh, I'm sorry, Hank, Hank Benbaum from East Front and Grace here with us, is our bond counsel to help us leave any questions we have about it.
Okay, do you have anything to add at this time?
No, your ordinance would accept the proposal by the bank for the two notes and authorize borrowing.
Okay.
And of course, I mean, with the three Elmwood debt, you know, if interest rates did come down, we certainly would have, you know, the option of looking into refi, but I'm definitely glad we took out the debt we did when we did, obviously, you can't predict the markets, but, you know, the interest rate we got, you know, around two percent, you know, a year ago, certainly looks a lot better now.
And you mentioned in our conversation that if we don't end up drawing down the debt for the.
Line of credit.
Line of credit, then we won't have any fees, right?
That's right, yeah.
It's costless for us, so I thought that.
Yeah, I'm really grateful to FNB Newtown for that.
Yeah, that was an attractive feature of this proposal, to me at least. Any other questions or comments from council? All right, we're voting to approve ordinance ten fifty-four for debt for the three Elmwood purchase and a line of credit for emergency building repairs. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, three hands, thank you. All right, nine H, budget. Someone needs to do this.
I move that borough council advertisement of the twenty-two-three budget.
Is there a second?
Does it make a second?
Okay.
You're scrolling, there we go.
So we're adding a new mo, oh, I, I do appreciate us making the motion that was on there, but we are gonna need to make a new motion, so based on what we talked about, unless council, I mean, council has any other thoughts on the budget, you know, now is the time for us to, to talk about it, but at minimum, we're gonna need to amend, we're gonna need to make sure the budget that's advertised does not include the LST and does not include the additional parking controller. I would also ask that, given that, those changes, instead of only having a thirty-five hour week public works employee, I would like to make that employee forty hours a week.
And that would still be within the.
Oh, yeah. So I mean, we're gonna save about, you know, seventy thousand with the, you know, not having the parking controller, and then, and then we're giving back twenty-five thousand for the LST, that puts us up forty-five thousand, and then we're talking, we're losing another eight by bumping that person up to forty, so we're still ahead thirty-seven thousand.
What about the part-time part?
Oh, that's true, so you put a part-time on it, and that takes up about thirty-seven thousand.
So that would still be a wash.
Yeah.
All right, so Samantha has made a proposal to put the hours for the public works employee back up to forty. Does anybody have any injections to that? All right, so we'll, we'll set that aside as a, as a change. We've already voted down the LST, that has to be made. So the remaining question is whether to include twenty-hour week part-time parking controller Council members wanna speak on this?
Well, I think, I think there might be some revenue associated with having the second controller, that's what I don't underst, you know, I don't understand, like, how much parking fee revenue would be to.
Well, I thought that the parking controller, the second parking, I mean, I guess it should be, I mean, feeling there, yeah.
I think, I think in the past, just thinking back, that the times when a second parking controller was needed had to do with patrolling downtown, like, the station area, like, after five and, and on weekends, and that was kind of the purpose for a second. And also those districts of two hour that are also in good Saturday.
I'm saying, you're, you'll be taking people on weekends for a, for a.
How much you recover?
I think it's a new, it's an impressive issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would wait on it.
Okay, fine.
Well, and I, another, I guess the question I have is, even if we included that in the budget, that doesn't commit us to hiring that person right away, you know, that's, that's, you know, we left in the budget and we could then see, does it make sense to do that, to hire that person?
Well, let's ask Manager Bryant, do you think, does any increase revenue by having the second person?
Yeah, part, absolutely.
Like, but, I mean, would cover like half the salary?
Oh, I mean, I'd probably, my conservative answer would be, you're probably looking at an extra five, ten grand figure in revenue from it, based on what I saw when we had, had a part-time person doing it. The person also was a huge help in just terms of providing another body during special events and that kind of thing, as well as driving cars and all that kind of thing.
Then you have coverage when the full-time employee parking controller is on vacation, which we don't have if we don't have a second person.
You kind of need to offset the salary by what they, you know, do in terms of beginning with four, so by five to ten thousand. It still puts us in a, right?
No.
Although, because, yeah, you'd be thirty-two, thirty-seven to thirty-two, that's more than one-five, so. The offset twenty-five to ten thousand off of the thirty-seven, didn't we say the salary was thirty-seven thousand?
No, well, I said the net, I said after you do all those other changes, putting, before you consider anything, if you get rid of full-time parking, you get rid of LST, and you bump the public works up to, from thirty-five to forty, then you're left with a savings of thirty-seven thousand.
Which will more than pay for the part-time, especially if you consider.
It'd be, it'd be pretty close.
It'd be a wash.
Yeah, I mean, it's a call it a wash. That's the ten thousand dollars difference, I'd say, if you went.
So, I mean, that's, I think that's, that seems like a real approach, and again, we don't necessarily have to hire a person right away, but I mean. And again, we don't necessarily have to hire a person right away, but I mean, could. But you just don't like that it's a part-time person.
Personally, I don't like the idea of hiring part-time employees. I mean, we don't, we don't have the work for a full time, so it's a little bit awkward. I just, I find it an exploitative system, so I'm not a favorite.
Fred, as someone who worked at full and part-time job for many years when my kids were younger, I actually think a part-time job like this might be, because you're not talking part-time 8 to 4 and not providing benefits. If we're talking off-hours and weekends, I actually think if we pay a fair hourly wage, I do feel comfortable doing that. And I share your concern of re-exploiting someone. I actually think this is a good opportunity if we pay a get a livable, fair hourly wage for someone who's supplementing their full-time job.
Maybe someone who wants to be similar.
Part-time, that's what I mean.
I think I see where councils go here. Let's, let's vote on this separately and then let's go on all the changes. Does that make sense?
You could do that, if that's important.
I didn't
I mean, I'm saying, if we're going to, if we're going to amend to change the parking controller to part-time, we have decided.
You could do one motion that
It's fine, it's fine. All right, so what I'm hearing from the rest of council is that you want to go with the part-time parking controller. So in that case, since the other two changes, we all agree on, what do we need to do? Need to make a motion to amend the budget?
Yeah, make a mo-- we would need a motion to advertise the 2023 budget with
The following amendments.
Yeah, with these changes, increasing the Public Works employee from 35 to 40 hours, removing the local service tax, and changing the proposed parking controller from full-time to part-time.
Okay, that's everything.
So moved.
Well, hold on, just to make sure, no one has any other changes they want to propose to make at this time? Because this is it. Okay, let's have the motion then. All right.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Barbara, okay. Any further discussion of the budget as amended? All right, we are voting to advertise the budget with changes to the hours at the Public Works employee, changes to the hours of the second parking controller, and third rule of the LST. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, nine I, the added item.
Yes, this is, this will now actually be resolution 2022 30 instead of 2022 31 to appoint Burkhymmer as the delinquent EIT collector.
Okay, I'll have to make that motion.
We would be appointing Burkhymmer as the delinquent EIT collector.
Okay, is this, do we need to amend the resolution that's in there? Because it's going to say LST as well.
I'll sort that out with Burkhymmer later.
Okay. All right. So this, do you want to discuss what this is?
Sure, so for anyone
No, wait a second, I'm sorry. Bob told me a second, and he's totally right. Seconded by Rob, okay.
Thank you, Rob. So anyone who doesn't pay EIT on time, that's within power of Burkhymmer to, you know, within the confines of Act 511 and the Local Tax Enabling Act and other relevant legislation to pursue delinquent EIT collection.
Okay. Discussion for council? All right, we're voting 2022 30 to appoint Burkhymmer as the delinquent EIT collector. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right, information items. Monthly reports have been filed. We got an update on the, on the bridge, just like the summer.
It's moving along, so
We're going on spot.
As we've discussed, just so council knows, we'll talk about this in infrastructure as well. Pinone is scheduled to attend our January debt work session to provide a more detailed update on where we're at with the project. Our schedule right now calls for us to have a contractor in place by the end of February in order to start work, you know, on the bridge or, you know, when the weather starts to permit it.
Okay, new business, new business. Okay, so for old business items, very significant. 12A is the Master Park Plan Committee. Would like to start the discussion here.
Okay, so following up from our, I guess it was maybe our October, one of our October meetings where council, you know, gave me permission and moved forward with figuring out the Master Park Plan Committee. I reached out to the Planning Commission and I was told that no one on the Planning Commission had the capacity at this time to participate in the Master Park Plan Committee. The Shade Tree Commission did provide Sally Anderson as being able to participate in the Master Park Plan Committee. And we have four members of Parks and Rec who are interested in being on the Master Park Plan Committee. I know Borough Council had spoke about maybe having a member or two of council on the, on the committee as well. So I was hoping here tonight for council, you know, see if council was comfortable actually making appointments to the committee so we can start to get it organized, so it can start, you know, start actually working on, you know, developing our master park plan.
Okay. All right, so we have five proposed members right now.
And I would say maybe leave the option, leave the door open for the Planning Commission if they have someone in the future who can participate.
Since we're appointing someone, no, the Planning Commission.
Two for the price of one?
And we, well, we have a rec, open rec and a now planning commission.
Okay.
All right, so first of all, let's see, does anyone have any objections to the five members who've currently been nominated? There are four members from Parks and Rec and the and Sally, I'm just realizing that we're putting four members of Parks and Rec on the same committee. That's a quorum of Parks and Rec. Is that
That is true, well, I mean
Is that causing trouble?
Four.
There's four of the seven members who are, who want to be on this Master Parks.
The meetings of this committee are going to be publicly advertised either way, whether there's three or four members of Parks and Rec on it.
Oh, it wouldn't matter.
Okay, great. All right, so is there, I'm not hearing any concerns about the current, about the four members of Parks and Rec and Sally Anderson. Do we, what do we envision for Borough Council? Do we envision, remember, I don't remember, let me have this discussion.
I recall council talked about having one or two council members on it.
Okay. Is there a council member who would like to volunteer to work with the Master Park Plan Committee?
Chief, no, I think we're all over. I mean, I'm on three committees.
Yeah. So I mean, I don't know, maybe with all due respect to Sally, I mean, maybe then we just make this like a subcommittee of Parks. Again, they would still legally advertise their meetings, but why don't we just almost make it a subcommittee of Parks and Rec and just, I mean, Sally still wants to do it. She's certainly welcome to come to the meetings. But maybe we just make it the four members of Parks and Rec.
Effectively, yes, Parks and Rec and they work through it, do it through a subcommittee. They may sometimes discuss it at their full meetings as well, if there are, at all times, they tend to be together. I think that's a good suggestion, really.
And then, of course, I mean, we're going to, I mean, they're going to need, as part of the process, I mean, they're going to need input as stakeholders from Shade Tree Commission, EAC, our recurring park users, that sort of thing, so.
So we'll just call whoever, well, we'll have Ms. Anderson as the representative to, who will be at 10th or meetings, but
Not a voting member of the
Okay.
Is there a question that maybe, in fact, maybe we've talked about before, is there, are they going to need some professional support?
Yeah, so one of the first tasks that we had, in that kind of like mission sort of thing, one of the first tasks they'll need to do is work through the process of selecting professional support. And as part of the, I mean, obviously, we don't know yet if we got it or not, but just, you know, there's a certain process when you're awarded a DSCNR grant that you have to follow for, for selection of professional consultants. And just to, you know, be on top of our game, we'll follow that process.
We've put in submissions for grant money for professional help with this. Hopefully, it will come at minimal cost. Okay, that seems to be the will of council then, to make it a subcommittee of Parks and Rec and they can determine their three members for the subcommittee.
So let me, let me ask this question to John then. In that case, if it's just a subcommittee of Parks and Rec, does council even need to make an appointment? Or is that, or just Parks and Rec can make that appointment?
This is a subcommittee of Parks and Rec, and Parks and Rec will make that appointment.
Okay, so we'll allow them to make the appointment at their next meeting. And let's Okay, sounds good. All right, 12B is streeteries. All right, so this is, they've been discussed many times. I think we have two options on the table for tonight.
Yeah, so based on the feedback I got from council back here in July, as well as comments from council ever since then, I developed, well, so there's a resolution that this solicitor put together. That is the same, basically, the resolution, you know, references the two choices of documents that are out here. The two doc, the only difference between the two documents is the minimum safety barrier regulations. The first one is based upon the materials that Infrastructure Committee submitted to council back in July. Based on feedback from, from members of council, an alternative proposal was developed based on regulations from Westchester Borough. They almost literally were copied and pasted from Westchester. And the two images that are in there, examples I got off, you know, Google Street View from Westchester Borough. The main difference between them, in the first example, the minimum safety barrier is more specifically, you know, designed, more specifically stated as to what it will entail. The second option gives more leeway to business owners as to what it would be. But then we won't, depending on how important this is to council, we won't have consistency with it necessarily anymore. But based on the concerns of council members, it could be something, you know, that would be less of a financial sort of situation for the Borough or less, less of an impediment for implementation. So, you know, those are the two options queued up for council. You could decide to go with one or the other, you could go decide with neither. You know, I just wanted to prepare, based on the feedback I've heard, these are the options that I've prepared for you so far here.
Bob, you want to talk a little bit about this?
Well, only a little history, because I'm not really familiar enough with the two options. Is it two Westchester options or just the Westchester option and what we currently have?
Well, we technically don't have anything.
What we were proposing.
The first option is, the first option is what the Infrastructure Committee proposed to Borough Council back in July. And the second option is based upon some of the feedback from that meeting, this is Westchester.
Okay, so now I know how to address it. So like, I'll just address the feasibility of like pursuing the infrastructure option. I'll just address the feasibility of pursuing the infrastructure option, because I did look with contractors at how that would be implemented and discovered that, like, yeah, there's not really, there's, there's not really a very cost-effective way of building a kind of bar, a water barrier to cover. Because in order to do it, like structurally do it, you end up with a structure that's about two feet wide. So for every one foot of length, you have a two-square-foot footprint, like taking up essentially like about every 10 feet. That's 20 square feet, you know, like a, one parking space is going to be five out, 10, 20 down and five back in again. That's like, you're already like 100 square feet, basically, just of structure that's going to be incredibly wide. And it more than a, more than an impediment to people using the street, even the diners and all that. So it kind of had to really, it's a more than, it's a big barrier. It's a big, big, wide wall surrounding the dining area. And also, it's expensive to build and it'll be very heavy for, for the Public Works guys to move. Even, even with a forklift, it's just a cumbersome, and most, I just put for four contractors, three of the four. Well, one of the contractors would just say like, this is just a terrible idea, don't do it. Paint, you know, paint the water barriers. Like, he was just like, I'm out. And this is like one of actually the most creative people I could find, who's like, really, I, I've seen his architectural solutions. He's a really good design builder and he was just like, no, it's not the way to do this. Like, look in Philadelphia, you can see a zillion examples of more practical ways that this is done. The second, the other two who have big construction firms actually said like, sure, we'll do this for you, but like, one said, well, I'll build them in my shop, we'll bring them over, but they're going to be really expensive. And the, and the third one said like, well, I'm going to build them in the street to keep the costs down, but really, they're just a permanent thing and I don't really, can't really guarantee how long they'll last. The fourth option was the one that the contractor, was a local contractor and he voluntarily built, just an example, a sample. And he basically said like, this is it, this is the solution, this is the only solution I can think of that I will build you. And it's that little lattice-covered thing that actually the folks up at Christopher Ryan's really liked because it like fits their decor. No, they love it. And they could have them for $118 apiece, we cover every single one of their water barriers for about $1,200. And they, they kind of, they loved it because like now they have something that sort of matches their restaurant. But I don't think it really fits the exact, like specifications that Michelle outlines really well in the, you know, in the initial brief that was sort of like trying to get at something. So, so I did read through the Westchester thing and I think those are, I think those are really practical and kind of give a much better, kind of point towards better solutions that are practical and can be built. And then if the Borough wanted, I personally don't have a problem with each restaurant doing something unique and different. Maybe we could, as a council, subsidize, in some, you know, to some extent subsidize them if we feel it's important to make a contribution, or maybe that's done through the NBA, like in the same way that we provided grants before. And then one final, one final thought just is that whenever, whenever we give, give away a parking space on the public right away, it's like, we're sort of creating a, we're kind of designating a private use for what was sort of once a public use. And so, you know, maybe we also want to look at, in addition to this, that go back to the idea that was really popular before the pandemic of creating parklets that could be used, have multiple uses. And like people could take food out from restaurants and go sit in the parklet. Those could be, you know, Borough-funded Borough spaces in the street for, to enhance the street space for our diners and like, you know, and downtown businesses, so. That was something, but that was, that was a popular idea, like you have to go all around the country before the pandemic happened. And then that idea sort of went away because we had these, we suddenly had a zillion little parklets anyway, restaurants and cafes. That's my comment, my comments.
All right, have a show.
I'm confused beyond
Sorry.
Description. No, you can confuse.
Oh, okay.
I said it's a clarification question, so once I can understand that. It says, I'm looking at the packet, page 251 of the packet. It says, page one, Margaret Borough Guidelines for Outdoor Dining Areas. Minimum safety barrier required. There was a paragraph and there was two pictures. And then there's part two, Guidelines for Streeteries and Supplemental Guidelines. Are these two different things?
No, so
I, I don't
So the, in both documents, only part one is different. The language in all the other parts is the same.
So that's, that's the Westchester, the first one, basically the Westchester.
I don't understand, is my packet different from mine?
So you've got, you've got that part, which is basically saying, general guidelines, and the business can decide how to implement that, which is sort of the Westchester.
Minimum, part one, Minimum Safety Barrier Required, that's from Westchester.
Or less, yeah.
Does that go with anything else, or is that standalone?
That would like replace the, the paragraph that we had in our document for minimum barriers.
Page with all the red.
So then we're proposing to combine that with the aesthetic guidelines. And that's, because it goes on and on and on, so that's why I'm...
Okay, so here's the other option.
Right, that was when we had a new...
Which is a different opening.
Got it, okay.
And then it's the same from that on.
Oh, so we're, we're proposing to keep the guidelines, the aesthetic guidelines, and combine them with Westchester's Minimum Safety Guidelines. Thank you.
Correct.
Sorry for being dense.
No, 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 I'm glad we worked that out. I'd rather, I'd rather ask if you figured it out than not.
So the, part of the question is, do we want to keep any aesthetic guidelines at all?
I mean, that's an option as well. That's really, when I said, uh, we can go with either, that, that's an option too, yeah.
They're not all aesthetic, I mean, some of the guidelines are about not obstructing passage and not obstructing rights of way, so...
And water travel and...
A lot of those actually are in the ordinance.
Yeah. You're advocating through like, no.
No.
The outside dining ordinance has a lot of this contained in it, that, really, the substance, I think, but the ordinance does prefer the ability of council to pass the resolution, additional design guidelines. So there are sort of the minimum standards still within the ordinance, apart from the second.
That can clarify. Can I speak to, so we are three years into a pandemic, and I think we are the last people standing with ugly Jersey barriers, we've got nowhere to go but up. So I think at this point, we say, like, you know what, there's no need to micromanage this, folks, here are the basic safety guidelines, have that, uh, and we, we let it go. Like, we assure that there's a permit, we understand that it is safe, and then as a council, we, we let it go. At like every other municipality, Philadelphia beat us.
So hold on, Cindy, I'm not sure what you're, what you're advocating here. Right now, we've got two options that you have.
Option two.
The, the one, the, the Westchester guidelines.
Absolutely, yes. No, but you're not advocating that, because... It's just that, yeah. Well, I mean, that, that's what I was trying to get clarification on, because we're talking, the options here in the package, I understand, are ditch the Jersey, option one is ditch the requirement for a Jersey barrier, use this sort of scaled-down minimum safety barrier, but, but keep the aesthetic guidelines required, like, you can't build the thing higher, aesthetic and safety guidelines. Okay. You can't have open flames, you can't block water travel, you have to have that, the platform has to be level with the sidewalks, so people can get on to it, you know, you can't build, then to obstruct the view of the business, you know. So those, you're saying that aesthetic, I would consider that safety. Well, some of them are somewhat aesthetic in nature, some are more safety, but, you know, like, just sort of some, some design standards that they at least walks, that they're not, that they're within a range of acceptable.
Let me step in briefly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that the, the difference between the two proposals is really what Michelle said, which is the Jersey barriers. So proposal, one proposal, which is allow the businesses to do their own thing, it has to be like heavy sided, like planters or metal sides, but there's flexibility on how to do it. The second option says it has to be a Jersey barrier with a cover on it.
Sure, yeah.
And I think that, based on...
New Jersey barrier.
Okay, I think it'd be better if we left the option open, that if they want to go with the Jersey barrier, with the cover on it, uh, they can do so, but I, I agree that...
Let's say Oz and those barriers are best.
Interesting, you have a third option.
There's nothing stopping them.
Yeah, yeah, well, well, could, actually would, if we were to adopt that minimum barrier, would it stop them from keeping their Jersey barriers and doing something else?
The first one says they must be surrounded on three sides with steel frames or planter boxes, so it would, it would prohibit the Jersey barrier. And we can throw away, because if you really want, I don't know.
They are ours, they're ours.
No, I'm just, I, I thought Fred made a good point, like, if, let's say, let's say Ryan Christopher's like reads that, and they said, "Actually, we really want to keep our Jersey barriers with the little white things, and we're going to have to..." Um, you know, why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we just say, "Go for it," you know, it's their...
I mean, I would say the whole point, the whole point of why I embarked on, you know, this voyage, was, you know, it seemed simple enough when I first started working here a year and a half ago, uh, you know, as Cindy kind of said, Jersey barriers look ugly, let's figure out something that looks better, there's nowhere to go but up. And, you know, here we are, a year and a half later, and I just, I just don't want Jersey barriers. It just doesn't reflect what I think we want for the community or...
Did, um, did you get those from Mr. Metric, the manager of Westchester?
I, I just kind of went on their website and looked up their code, and, yeah.
So, as I was going to say, we got ours from him too.
I mean, I think that the, it seems like the will of council is to move with the, the first option, which is steel frames or planter boxes.
Yeah.
Open the business.
All right, so in that case, then, um, the resolution that I would recommend is to adopt Resolution 202231, uh, for these aesthetic guidelines with the, um, Westchester option.
Pick me, pick me. I would get one more of these, man. I was withdrawn. Second. What's some... I'm sorry. Hey, I'm being silly at this, it's like the silly.
Any, any further discussion? All right, uh, we're moving to Barbara.
I just want to clarify, so the, the Westchester option doesn't commit the borough to providing anything. Here, this is all the, the, the restaurants would, would do this themselves and pay for it themselves. If, if we were wanting to do something for them, that would be a different, that would be a decision down the road. I just wanted to make that clear, because the other option was saying the borough would provide them, so.
I think there's probably going to be a cost savings for them to implement, I mean, planters can't be that much.
Well, not, not to belabor this, but during the pandemic, when the borough gave some sum of money to the Business Association, Business Association out, I think they allocated that to businesses based on their need for services. Did that program work in power?
It was a matching program that we did. And to, to your point, I mean, we are giving a public spot. We really are, semi-permanently giving.
So it's kind of like, it's an investment.
Yeah.
Already making an investment.
Yeah, we've got the parking room.
All right, so I think right now, we're just considering this resolution rather than any subsidies. Any other discussion of this resolution? All right, we're voting on the, uh, outdoor dining guidelines requiring steel frames or planter boxes along with the, uh, the supplemental guidelines.
And this would go into effect when?
It'll go into effect when the current permits expire.
When?
About five months from now.
Perfect. All right, sounds good. Uh, all those in favor?
We did it.
I want one for my yard, just as like a tagger.
Don't get, don't get too cheerful. 12C, 12C parking regulations, okay. So, um, let's begin this discussion, uh, with a summary of what the Parking Committee discussed in their last meeting and, um, their recommendations. So Barbara.
Yes. Looking at that last thing, so that I, although I'm not sure I'll ever forget it, because that was quite a discussion.
Do you want Barbara to go to the Lakers committee?
Oh, absolutely, Mark, thanks.
Yeah, she's gonna, she's probably missing stuff for us too. Can you make her, so she can share her screen?
I don't, I don't have anything to share just yet, but I will. Um, so... Had to shift my gears. All right, so, um, I just want to first, um, remind everyone of a couple of things about, um, the proposed changes in parking. These changes only apply to existing two-hour zones, um, they don't apply to any other streets, um, and the two-hour zones that are in place are there because residents have requested them in the past. They were not imposed on any residents by the borough, they were there because residents felt they were needed, so. So I want to talk first about the enforcement period. We currently have a number of enforcement periods in the borough, especially on the north side of the borough. We have eight to six, eight to eight, 10 to eight, six to eight, some effective Monday through Friday, some effective Monday through Saturday, so we have a lot of combinations. The Parking Study and the Parking Study Task Force both recommended a streamlining of those periods, um, to make it easier for folks to understand what the rules were, um, and to make it easier to enforce it. And so that call for streamlining was one of the reasons for the Parking Committee recommending 24/7 enforcement. The other reason was we thought this would increase parking protection for people. They were already concerned about their parking so, ability, so this would increase that. Now, we heard a lot from the public, um, about the, uh, the fact that, no, we really don't need that increase in parking protection. We, we think the, um, current hours that we have are fine. What's interesting, though, is there were a number of people who stated their, the current hours in their emails, and it's not quite what their current hours are posted as, so there's confusion even for people who live on these blocks. So that, that tells me too, that there's a, a need for a little, a little streamlining. So, so the committee still feels that it is appropriate for us to take a look at what the current periods are and, um, come up with something that is more consistent, not necessarily throughout the borough, and I'll talk about that in a minute, but just more consistent, um, within certain areas, so. But before we can do that, we've realized that, um, we don't have a completely accurate summary of what the current enforcement periods are, are, what they're posted as, um, and you'd like to think you could look in the Borough Code and say, okay, this is what they are, but the Borough Code has not been kept up to date historically. In fact, um, there are certain areas where we have two-hour zones posted, not even in the code right now, so there, cleanup needs to be done. So the committee has asked, um, the staff to, um, go back and make sure we have an accurate summary or recording of that, so that the committee can then look at ways to simplify the enforcement periods based on the needs of the affected areas. So for instance, areas near the two business districts, have it referred to Montgomery Avenue, may need protection Monday through Saturday, because, um, there, there may be, whereas other areas might only need Monday through Friday. You know, if you're an area that's near a restaurant and other evening activities, you might need enforcement to 8:00 p.m., where other areas, you only need it till 6:00. So we want to take a look at that and see, can we come up with some consistency in those different areas? Our goal is to have one enforcement period for each neighborhood. Remember the, that's kind of taking the, the map that Nelson Nygaard put together, where they kind of divided Narberth into north, central, and south, um, with the understanding that we might need to change the neighborhood boundaries on the north side to accomplish that, we might need to tweak that a little bit. Regarding the south side, which is where we got the majority of, um, public comments from, the majority of the streets on the south side appear to be posted eight to six, Monday through Friday. There are a few outliers, so we're going to look at those, and we hope, with the hope that it makes sense to change them to be consistent with the rest of the south side, so that we can have just this one enforcement period for the south side. So that's, that's what the committee would like to do. I, I'd like to hear whether, um, anybody on council has concerns about that before we talk about fees. Concerns or questions? So...
Uh, I'm not seeing any concerns here, so I think go ahead and, uh, proceed with that line of inquiry.
Okay, um, and I just thought of one other thing I wanted to mention. We, we've asked to have this, um, inventory ready in time for us to, um, look at this a little, in a little bit in advance of our December 9th, um, Parking Committee meeting, so hopefully we can, um, have a good sense of what the enforcement periods should be coming out of that meeting. That's, that's our, that's our plan.
All right, I may just say, for the sake of the community, that, uh, so this is us, uh, moving away from the 24/7 enforcement proposal. This is going to result in most streets having the same times that they currently have, we're merely trying to, at this point, rationalize it a little, so that, uh, it's going to be easier for us to enforce, but most streets should have the same hours of enforcement that they currently do, uh, under what comes out of, under the proposal that's going to come out of Parking Committee. Okay, go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, um, so the, the next thing that I wanted us to talk about, and Samantha, am I able to put something on the screen now? Am I a co-host? I don't know.
Yeah, you're a co-host.
Okay, hang on, now let's, let's just see if I can do this.
You need me to, just let me know.
I will. It's, it's like, it's always a, uh, feels like it's always a... Are you going to? Yeah. Why is it not doing that? I'm not sure it's going to let me do it, and I don't know why.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you, I'm doing what I did the other day in a meeting, and it's not doing it. Thank you. So I'll start by, um, saying that the, the fees that are, that we've talked about here are fees to cover the cost to administer and enforce the two-hour zones. The current fees are $5 for residential permits and no fee for guest passes, and those cover only about 5% of the cost of administering and enforcing just the two-hour zones, not, it doesn't include costs of other parking enforcement, this is just looking at what it costs to enforce the two-hour zone. So with that in mind, we know that the fees should be increased, because, um, this is a, a service that is being provided at the request of folks, just like if you are putting an addition on your house, you need to have, uh, you know, a zoning officer review possibly, you need to have inspections done, you need to pay the fees for those permits, you're not asking your neighbor to subsidize those. This is the same kind of idea. So at our November 3rd meeting, council settled on the schedule that you see here, um, $25 for the first permit, if you have a driveway, $10 for the first permit if you don't, and then $50 for the second, 100 for the third, 200 for the fourth, and then for guest passes, $5 for daily, $15 for weekly, and $75 for an annual hang tag. I thought it probably makes sense, given what we've heard from the community, to talk about guest passes first. So I, I want to just say one thing, because I saw some confusion on this in some of the comments, um, that we received. The guest pass would only be needed for guests who stay longer than two hours within the enforcement period. So now that the enforcement period is not going to be 24/7, it means, you know, you'd have, it's, there's a shorter period of time in which you'd have to worry about it. So I just want to make sure everybody understood that, because I think some people thought no matter what the enforcement period was, the guest pass was always going to be needed. So I wanted to clarify that. The reason that we felt there should be a fee for the guest pass to cover the cost of the administration and enforcement, again, we're looking at that, um, to prevent the usage of a guest pass to avoid paying a residential permit fee, because to do that, um, if one felt like they wanted to game the system. And the committee also felt it was important to, um, have some clarity for residents who are paying to park, they're paying... paying to park, they're paying a permit, with the guests that are coming. So it just, it felt important to us to do that. So that's why the committee recommended those. Well, the annual hang tag fee was something that the council came up with as a group at our last meeting, but the daily and weekly fees were from the committee. So I think the question is, what does council want to do at this point? And we've certainly heard a lot from the community that we shouldn't be asking guests to pay anything. So I just want to point out, if we, if guests aren't paying something, what that means is there is definitely a possibility that some people will use a guest pass to avoid having to buy a residential parking permit. So they're not really a guest, but they're going to, you know, pretend they are. So what, you know, I think we just need to keep that in mind, that if we do that, we're, you know, that's always a possibility. And what the committee is just starting to consider is, and we think this should be in place, no matter what the fee level is, whether there's a fee or not, that there should be some kind of penalty if you abuse the guest pass system, if you're caught. You know, it's, there's no way to know this for sure. So anyway, I think it would be good, Fred, for council to talk about what they want to do with guest pass fees.
All right, thanks, Barbara. Rob, let's argue in a first.
Okay. So with the guest pass fees, I would suggest $0 for daily. I would also be open to $0 for the weekly if we could have some sort of, you know, fine if you're caught. I don't know what that would look like. And then the $75 annual does make sense to me because that saves you the hassle of registering license plates, and for some families, that would make sense. It's worth the cost. But I think, you know, currently, it's required in regulated zones to register guest license plates. So if we've changed it to zero, we're not really changing anything with regard to guest passes.
We, sorry, just one quick, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, there would be one change there in the sense that right now you can register for a monthly guest pass, but I think if there is no fee for a monthly guest pass, we really shouldn't allow that because I think that makes it really easy for someone to game the system then, if they only have to go in monthly and register their car as a guest when they're not really a guest. It's too tempting.
All right.
I mean, are you going around?
No, I'm saying, Cindy.
Well, I've been opposed to guest pass charges the entire time. I think the community loud and clear said charging for guests is unconscionable. You do make a great point. Do you get to pay for a $75 hang tag for the convenience of not having, paying for a fast pass? I'm not considering that. Consider if daily and weekly is still zero.
So I just, I think, Barbara, I just want to supplement something you said, but I think you did mention this, it's important to remember, the point of a guest pass is only because you have a two-hour protected zone. There's no other way to distinguish between your legitimate guests and commuters who are taking your parking.
Yes.
You have to have a guest pass parked if you're going to protect parking for people. But, I mean, I'm with you, Rob, but I think that certainly, I feel particularly if we're not going to change the parking permit fees from what the committee's recommended anymore, I'm particularly at that point comfortable with saying, hey, you know, keep the guest passes free for daily and for weekly. I mean, I can't imagine anybody's, I guess somebody could go in every week and register themselves for a guest pass. I mean, you know what? If you want to go to that, I'm paying $10 for a permit, you know, go for it. Monthly, you start to get to the point where almost makes sense. So I would draw a line at weekly and say that there are people, though, who do have this sort of ongoing need. They have caretakers that come, and they're always the same license plate. So that's why I would like, I'm hopeful that we can still keep the hang tags option for those folks. You're buying the convenience, looking at what they're in your car. It's, I think that'd be very helpful for some people. So I'm pretty comfortable with everything that was just said, particularly if we're not going to tinker with the permit fees. Because I am sensitive to the idea that, I think ideally, the program should pay for itself. I think they are, you're correct, Barbara. And the committee's correct in that consideration.
All right. So, you know, as Barbara stated, these zones were all created in response to community requests, right? And now we're hearing the community saying that they're willing to have looser rules and lower fees and no guest fees, and they're not worried about parking on their block. I mean, that's what they've said pretty loudly and clearly. Go ahead, finish your thought. So, you know, I just, I guess I, given that supposedly the incentive to do this whole thing came from the community, I think we have, you know, a responsibility to listen to what they're saying.
Guest fees is not the same as no guest passes.
One more now. If you're thinking about our emails and the conversation online, over 90% of our emails have been from residents on the south side. Almost all of the comments online that say there is no problem are from residents on the south side. Several of the comments from residents on the north side says, yeah, we do have parking issues, you know, particularly because of restaurants, or because of basketball games, or because of whatever. So I think it really is, it's not accurate to say that people are telling us they have a problem, it's just that we're hearing a lot from the people who have no problem. I think we can definitely assume that everybody on the south side is, you know, telling us what they believe, but we're also not hearing, you know, what we're hearing from residents on the north side is different. So I do want to point that out.
That's right.
I think that in terms of guest passes, it may not affect our judgment, but in terms of some of the other, it's worth keeping in mind.
I have not been listening to the south side, saying we don't want, maybe some people said we don't want guest passes. It's different to say, I don't want guest passes, to say, I don't want to pay for them. Those are two different things. I think the other thing that's really important to remember is another thing that I hope that we will pass in this part, and so we will keep with the committee's recommendation, to have a program wherein a block or two blocks or, we have to define that, by the way, can opt out of the permanent program. So if you literally are in the south side and at some point, somebody in the past, you know, had a two-hour zone on your block, and it's ridiculous, but you don't think you need it, you know, talk to your neighbors, you can petition the borough on some trial basis, maybe remove it, see if that's working, and then ultimately take it away altogether. But there's one little technical point I'm going to ask the committee, since you're still working on this, to give some thought, to who would be able to do that petitioning? Do you need an address on that street? Do you need, because I say this because, and I was going to always bring a map, but I didn't think we're going to get this into the details. If you live on the south side, you know that probably the street that you're most likely to get train parking is South Essex Avenue, right? A whole way up from the train, South Essex Avenue, all the way up to Rockland. You almost, it's all two-hour parking. I think it's like eight to six. You almost never see anybody parking on the street. And there's only one house that actually has an address on South Essex Avenue. One in the, every other house has their addresses on the side streets. And what's on South Essex Avenue, Lufthansa houses? They're not, they're side property lines. And so who would be able to petition to remove a two-hour zone on South Essex because it may or may not really be necessary? Might be the logical place for commuter parking to go rather than off that on the cross street. So just, I just want to give some thought to that.
So I have that on my list of details that we need to work out in ordinance, in resolution draft, and so, yeah.
Go on, respond, Sam.
Yeah, just to make sure folks that we are keeping resident comment in mind as well, a question has been raised at our meetings about how people who live on corners and that sort of thing will play into this as well. You know, what if your street has differing, very low number of people versus a very large number of people? There's certainly some details with that proposal and the concerns that Michelle has raised. There's certainly some details that we need to work out and work out, that would actually play out.
Just wanted to add, to really minor comments. With guest passes, it seems to me that the only person who could really apply for a guest pass would be a person who lives in a home and already has a permit. You know, at least one permit. They already have to be in the system as a permit holder in order to be able to apply for a guest pass. Otherwise, let's say on the north side, if I live in an apartment building, I could really love to get a parking two-hour zone and make myself a guest there. I don't know how else, it's, the thought is just, the question is, how else do you, how else do you ensure that, that would, like, guests are actually getting the street passes, especially if they're free? The other thing is just on the question of commuters. In some of our, in some of our letters from people who live on the south side, when most of them, they said, like, the reason we have these two-hour spots is to prevent commuters from parking. But then some people that are on the south side said, like, there's virtue in having commuters park and having a separate train station used because then they're using the right kind of transportation if they're using the train. And they're not driving at all. So should the borough consider actually providing a certain number of commuter parking spaces or commuter parking passes? This was, this has not been an issue for at least three years since the pandemic started because the set-the-lot's not even getting full. And maybe it's now begun to get full again, so we'll see this issue come up again.
It's still free.
Yeah, let's, anyway. I just think that that's, I think it's a question that council should look at in the future.
I would propose that we take that up when the set-the-lot is more often free. Right now, they're doing it for us.
I would only question whether or not it makes sense to require someone to have a parking permit in order to get a guest pass.
It's what it's made of, so it doesn't have a permit. Like, I think one of the people that just have bikes and can't get, you know, and then somebody wants to park on the street, it can't get a guest pass.
That's a good slide. That's a good point.
Yeah, I, Bob, I think that's a question.
Yes.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, and I think that's a question for the committee to take up. Again, this is where I think we need to have some penalties for people who try to game the system, and I think, yes, it's not as easy to stop them from the get-go, but we can have things on the signup pages that make it clear that if you don't live in a two-hour, on a two-hour block, you can't request a guest pass. And if you are, you are subject to a fine if you're caught. And so I think we just need to do that, to address that.
All right, so I'm hearing, sorry, Aaron. It seems like there's pretty good consensus on the change to the charges for the guest pass.
Can I summarize what I think I've heard so that I can make sure?
You can go ahead, but I don't, go ahead.
Okay. So what I've heard is that the daily and weekly guest passes will be free. There will be no monthly guest pass anymore. That will go away. And you can buy a hang tag that's good for a year for $75. Where we are?
I see a lot of dots.
Okay. Cool. So then the other thing, I guess, would be to talk about the residential parking permit fees and if we're still comfortable with these, or would council like to consider something else? And I was, if you do want to consider something else, I would say, well, let's go back to the fee structure that the committee had proposed and see what that looks like if the base rate is $25. So this is the fee structure that council, that the committee originally proposed to And so I guess my question to council is, are you interested in looking at other dollar amounts, like?
Why don't you go ahead and show us?
Oh, good. All right. So, yeah, Samantha, you could go to the next slide then. So this is what the committee's structure would result in if you had a base rate of $25. Now, you know, you see that the without driveway first permit is $1,250. If we wanted to change that to $10, you know, because, you know, half of $25 is a funny number, but, you know. But that's what the schedule would look like. Because when we changed the permit fee at our meeting on the 3rd from $50 to 25, we didn't cascade that down through the structure. And I thought you might want to see what that looks like, if that was something that you were, wanted to consider doing.
My reading of the comments, Barbara, I'm not, I just want to be sure, like, I'm not necessarily different with the committee's application, but it's my interpretation of the emails that I've read, is that we've overcomplicated this, and that one of the ways that would be more simple would be just to have the same, the same first permit for everybody, just as, you know, still, do the, many people thought that the escalating rates made sense because they're just basically, you know, your neighbors, if they're storing more cars, it should cost them a little more. But some people thought it was just too complicated to be charging different rates for driveways and not for driveways. And I kind of thought a lot about that because, like, we're actually doing it the opposite way. We actually are proposing to do it the opposite way of the high cost of free parking argument, which basically says that if you subsidize people without driveways, you're messing with the value of the housing market in that you're creating higher value small houses in a community because you're giving those houses free parking, whereas people who buy houses that are large enough to have a driveway are actually paying for that driveway. You know, you pay a premium for a drive, a house with a driveway. I'm not making this argument. I'm just simply explaining why it's maybe reasonable to consider making it the same rate for both, because I'm not sure what we accomplish by making it a lower rate for people without a driveway.
The point, I believe that the committee's point was to encourage people who have driveways to use them. I seriously doubt that this price differential is going to manage behavior. I mean, I don't, certainly don't think it's going to encourage people to build different-sized houses. Doubt it will even make people park in driveways if that's inconvenient because, you know, people need to do what they need to do, so.
And some people really felt that it was going to make, like, sort of, it was manipulative, like, it's going to make us happy to pull in and out of our driveway and, like, you know, like, do a car dance.
Again, there were some complications in determining who had the right to use shared driveways and what driveways are useful.
Yeah, all that, yeah.
Also needs to be surrounded if we establish.
Give everybody a chance to sort the cloth.
Yeah, I would be open to that. It's true, the shared driveway question can't really be sorted out very easily. You know, most shared driveways, we have one, you know, that means you can only fit one car each house, and that's it. So, yeah, I think that the fees are coming down, basically, so it doesn't, it's kind of immaterial, I would just think.
Yeah, I did think perhaps there should be a difference of without the driveway, you should get the first permit at a reduced rate. However, I do hear the argument of why are we complicating this? I do still think those are a little too high, so I would ask the city to consider reducing them even lower than what they are now. And that if it's consistent to make life easier for everyone, then I think that we could do that, if we're comfortable with lower that then.
Could I, could I make just a couple points, and then maybe you could suggest what those dollar amounts would be, Cindy? So I think the other, one of the other reasons we wanted a lower rate for people who didn't have a driveway was, we thought, well, they don't have anywhere else to park their car. So we didn't want to kind of overburden them in a sense. So that was, I think, one of the other reasons for that. Oh, gosh, lost my train of thought. Oh, the question of what is, who has a driveway and who doesn't? Just remind everybody, we are not going to try to figure that out. We're going to trust the people, we'll be honest and say, I don't have off-street parking, so my first permit should be this lower fee, if we were going to do a lower fee. Again, we would have something, we would have a kind of a fine for that, a penalty for that, and we would say that if you, if we find out that you have incorrectly stated your driveway status, then this will be the consequences. So we weren't going to try to parse that out. We weren't suggesting the borough try to figure that out. So just so you know where we were going with that. So I guess, you know, I think, you know, if council wants to consider different dollar amounts now, that now's the time to put those out for everybody.
I haven't spoken yet, so.
Oh, sorry, Fred.
It's okay. I've been, you know, I've been recognizing people. I would say that right now, in terms of, it seems like we're coalescing or generally agreeing with what's here. I would say that right now, you know, if the costs stay $25 or less for your first two cars, really, the significant two cars, really, the significant fees start to be the third and fourth car. And I do not have a problem with saying, if you want to park a third or a fourth car, you know, you're going to have to pay a meaningful amount to the borough. That is a, you're taking up precious space on your street. It's significant. And, you know, most people are not doing that. You are using more than your neighbors. You know, look around, not that many houses have three or four cars on the street. So I think it is totally reasonable to put a higher number there.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, the great graduated fees make sense. And I'll just say once again, and I know that you can't answer this completely, parking committee, because you don't have many permits people will buy. It's just impossible to know. But I under, my only real concern is that the program should pay for itself. So I'd like to set the fees where we think it's likely to pay for itself, but not like, you know, maybe if it doesn't quite, you know, maybe if we find out we can do this for a year or two and we find out, you know, we're still kind of not paying for our parking enforcement, we consider raising the rates a little bit. But that's really my only concern. So I mean, I really like the committee, you spent a lot of time thinking about this and the borough manager, as I said, and how many permits we have as well, like, what fees, is there any way to know what fee structure would at least get us in the bottom market of just paying for the, paying for what we paid to administer in the fourth step?
That was a question for Samantha, so.
So, I mean, part of the challenge is, you know, is the boroughs never enforced the annual expiration on the thing. So they're about, in the system right now, there are about 2,500 records. And I don't know if there's 2,500, how many are, how many of those are valid records or not. I know, you know, there are, give or take a thousand properties in the borough, you know, I qualify for home set. I know there, you know, 1,500 properties in the borough total, including commercial and such. So, you know, I have no idea how many cars are actually in the borough.
Most are in two-hour zones, right? I mean, the basketball area streets are not in two-hour zones.
And that, exactly. And I don't, I don't know if how many properties are in a two-hour zone versus how many aren't. So, I mean, it's one of those things where we might just almost, how we had to overhaul our fee schedule last year, and it could be somewhere, we, you know, just have to pick a number here and, you know, and err on the side of caution and then see how the revenue actually plays out. And then next year, you know, we'll actually have data we can work with that'll tell us how much we need to charge in order to, you know, break even on it.
And when we say break even, we're talking about the amount of time and resources that the borough spends to enforce these two-hour zones. Parking controller time, admin time, police time, you know, down the line, possibly lawyer time if it gets to that, you know, so.
And that's the other thing too, that I think we'll have a better data point on as well, is, you know, if we can tell, ask the parking controller going into the year, could you kind of keep a better rough idea in your head? He might, he's new, you know, so like for this year, you know, if he wouldn't have been able to tell us how much time, you know, we made our best guess based on what I saw from our previous parking controller, how she did her job. You know, whereas, you know, at the end of next year, we could have a definitive answer how much time the parking controller spent on residential, two-hour enforcement versus meters versus other general parking infractions.
Can I, before you roll your eyes, I just want to say this again. The people who live in a two-hour zone, arguably, and I understand there are some like, hey, we want the two-hour zone outliers, bear the brunt of public goods that we all benefit from. So use the example of like folks coming to town for basketball games, park on Conway, right? Folks near the business district, right? Which is a key element of our town that we all benefit from. The train, right? We're transit worrying, folks that live near the train, bear the burden of those folks coming into town and parking. I continue to think it's unfair to say, you also then have to pay for us supporting you in bearing some of that burden. I think we have to equally distribute the cost of this two-hour enforcement. And to say like, hey, thanks for bearing the brunt of the business district, now I'm going to charge you a fee high enough if you want us to police that.
I'd like to respond to that. So, so Cindy, first of all, nobody with a fourth car has to pay the $100 if they want to park it on a non-regulated state street. So the fees, even if the fee was $1,000, it's not going to keep a person from owning that car and parking it in the borough of Darburg. They might have to walk two blocks or three blocks, but it's, but even the highest fee you can imagine wouldn't keep that person from having that fourth car if they really wanted. What they're doing actually is paying for the convenience of parking near their home. And all of us choose where to live, knowing that, and, and the marketplace, the, the marketplace for homes is based upon location usually. And so, you know, you, if you're a person who loves to take the train, you buy home near the train station because that's a convenience and you're getting the convenience of living near. So the notion that you're bearing the burden of commuters is really like, no, you're, you're actually, what you're doing is you're paying for the convenience of parking near your home. If, if I have a, say, I want to have an extra car and I want to, and I have no driveway, I want to purchase off-street parking in the borough of Darburg, I can buy off-street parking, but the parking, the commercial parking marketplace for off-street parking is, is over $100 a month, which is over $1,200 a year to store my car in an off-street parking space if I don't have a driveway. So actually, the borough's providing a service to someone with a vehicle that's a very good value. And it's being put parked in a space that could be used by your kids to play basketball in the street. I know people like scoff at the idea of kids playing in the street, but when I was growing up here, we played in the street all the time. We played touch football and, you know, hockey, all kinds of games in the street. People skating in the street, rode their bikes. The street is not a space necessarily, the borough doesn't have an obligation to provide space for people to park their cars. We have an obligation to provide an environment that's a great place to live. And I say that, that if, you don't have to pay any of these fees. If you want to go park your car in a place that doesn't have two-hour parking, there's tons of those spaces, you might have to walk a few blocks to your home. So this is convenience. And I, and I don't, and I don't buy the geographic argument that you're bearing the brunt of something, you're, the marketplace creates the value.
I understand.
Cindy, sorry, Aaron. Sorry. Could I run it out?
I'm just going to say something like what you said, Bob, that kind of, not as well. I mean, I just think that, yeah, there's, there's a borough, there's also a huge benefit to living with a walking distance of downtown and the train station, so.
Absolutely. I'm just saying, if you're saying the fee structure must pay for the enforcement, we're probably going to come back and say, yeah, this can't be $25. But if you're tying it structurally to those fees have to pay for after-year enforcement, are you really prepared to come back and say, oh yeah, this costs a whole hell of a lot? First permit, $75, second permit's $150. I think you have to set a limit and, and be comfortable with saying, yeah, this may not be self-funding, but we're not going to go above this fee because then it becomes a burden. That's my argument. I understand, and we all, the parking, I appreciate your time, but I think a lot of the feedback I got was like, yes, you keep explaining your perspective, we understand your perspective, we just disagree. My, my concern with the fee structure is, I hear you. Like, if you go to pay, that's a great rate.
No one's required to pay a hundred cities.
Right. I understand that. I'm just saying, if we say, okay, we're going to go with this fee structure and collect the data for a year, and if it doesn't pay for itself, we have to then increase those fees, those numbers may be astronomical. So that's my concern, is kind of structurally setting the fees up to, to pay for enforcement and suggesting, you know what, that's a burden that I can say we can equally distribute. The fees don't have to pay for part-time enforcement and for office time, all the other things listed. That's all.
I would say that we set our fees for contractors to pay for staff time. And for instance, I'm looking at some fees, mechanical permit, $100, use and occupancy permit, $200, roof permit, $100. So these are, you know, meaningful amounts that people pay, and that is because that's how much time it costs the borough to inspect all of these things and to make sure that they're safe. And to, you know, we're not going to subsidize builders, even though, A, you know, repairing people's houses, that's, that's a great thing. So typically, when we're setting fees, we set them to, you know, pay for the borough expenses. Like, that's just, we, we try to figure out what the borough expenses are. As Samantha was saying earlier, in the F and A meeting, I believe, you know, we figure out what the expenses are and set the fee accordingly to cover the boroughs and the expenses. So it's not, it's not unusual. We can say in this case that maybe we won't try to recover 100%. I mean, it's going to depend on, I think, what we see.
Yeah, and the meter revenue.
Yeah, but, you know, it's not like this is an unusual thing. This is how we set our fees.
Yeah, but I think what you're hearing, the people on the South Side, and I've been looking forward on that, saying is, they're fine with the signs with light enforcement. Because it's working right now, is what they're telling you.
Unfortunately, we can't, we really can't set different fees for the North Side and South Side. That would be, that would be, that would be terrible. So, all right, so remember, we're just splitting the difference here. We're saying, yeah, the South Side would rather have minimal enforcement and no fees, and the North Side would rather have significant enforcement.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, the South Side's saying is, the current system is working. That's what I, that's what I read in those messages, is like, they don't have a problem.
I, I agree that most streets in the South Side don't have a parking problem, period, and probably can get rid of their two-hour zones.
That's another, that's another way.
I mean, marrying to use my, with train station as a park, you know, to park up their streets, yeah. That's why they asked for those two-hour.
I mean, if you're going to ask people, hey, do you want to pay more fees? No one's going to say yes, or very, very few people are going to say yes. So, I mean, I think in that sense.
It's the department's topic.
We are, we are, we are saying, yeah, we, we understand your concerns about hours and we agree with you that if you don't think we need to enforce more hours, we're not going to do it.
Right.
And, and, you know, we're coming, we're saying the same with guest passes. If you're all comfortable with guest passes being free, you know, given that we're not going to enforce at night, it seems like that will work. But the question of fees is something else. It's more, it's more of a cost-sharing thing. It's not, it's not going to change the, the way it's being, things are being enforced. It's just going to.
Okay, so then I guess I'll, I'll respond to that and say, I think the fee should be a little lower.
To have a suggestion.
I don't know, like, half of that or like, maybe 15 instead of 25, that's the base?
I mean, we could, we could make 20 the base, then it's 2010, 2020. I mean, it should still probably say 50 on here, and then go 80. That's how we want it to be allowed. We could drop the first couple to 2010.
I thought we said we were going to keep it with the, without the same tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
We didn't.
We didn't, we didn't actually decide.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would propose just 2020 for, with driveway or without driveway?
You propose the same amount with or without driveway? I don't, I, I'd really prefer the, the first one to be cheaper without a driveway because people don't have a choice.
But can we define for people whether a shared driveway is without or with? Because I think essentially, a shared driveway is without.
Yeah.
But I, I thought we could say without, with, without driveway or shared driveway would be the lower fee. Borrow?
So what I was going to suggest, and this is something that the committee's going to be talking about, but I think what we really should just say is, if you have no off-street parking, then you get that lower rate for your first permit. So if you attest to having no off-street parking, there you go. And so that might be, yeah, so I have a shared driveway and my neighbor always parks there because we have an agreement that that's what they do. So then in that case, I have no off-street parking.
That's a good.
Very simple. I guess. Yeah, I guess it does.
Well, I mean, I think we've provided some pretty good direction here without micromanaging them.
All right, let's, let's throw this back to parking committee.
No, wait.
Do you have what you need? No.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a member of the committee per se, but I feel like the committee has brought numerous proposals to council that council has then questioned. So I just, I don't know if there's any value in the parking committee continuing to talk about it.
I think council needs to decide now. So I can say again what I think I just heard? That would serve? Is that a page, Fred?
Go ahead.
Okay. So what I think I just heard was that we were saying that the first permit would be $20 if you have a driveway and $10 if you don't. And I'm using that, but let me say, if you have off-street parking, it would be $20. If you don't have off-street parking, it would be 10. The second permit would be $20 in both cases. The third permit, $50 in both cases, and the fourth permit, $100 in both cases.
Okay. I mean, not that, I hate to like, I'm starting to throw a monkey wrench into this after all this discussion. If we're talking about fees that are like, that are relatively low or different from administrative standpoint, if we're talking a difference of, you know, 20 versus 10 for driveway versus no driveway, I don't know, I would, I would admit that I would prefer to go with the idea of, of consistency between driveway versus no driveway to make it a little bit easier on the staff. If we're not achieving the policy goal that we set out.
Yeah. I mean, what this does is, this allows us to raise them proportionally if it ends up, if we're not. Well, okay. So your suggestion is that we, is that we, is that we drop it?
Policy goal.
In that case, I think the, in that case, we could, we could reduce the first one to just $10.
Yeah, I'm advocating for first permit, 10, second permit, 20, third permit, 50, fourth permit, 100, whether you have a driveway or not.
Okay, sounds good. And that's, that's no change in permit fee in 30 years. The current fee is $5?
Yeah, it was $2 or $3. Twenty people remind me of the fee used to be like.
I knew in 1997, I fought a permit for $10.
Oh, okay.
So the, the one thing I'm just going to point out is, our current fee is $5, and that doesn't even cover 5% of the cost. So I, I think that once we have the data at the end of the year, we're going to see that these are probably too low if our goal is to cover the cost of administration enforcement. But.
That's, that's not fair. We're not collecting the fee.
I've been here for 18 years, I've bought two $5 permits.
Let's, let's, let's see what the numbers end up with after you.
I'm just, I, I'm just pointing out, we're only doing something that's twice what we currently have. So I'm just saying, it's, it's pretty darn low still.
So I just want to address what you're saying, is that after two managers ago, they were collecting the fee. One manager ago, they decided to stop collecting the fee because they were intent on instituting a new, more rational program.
Right.
But it was, but it was like, it hit like all kinds of juggernauts. You know, it's.
I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, we haven't been collecting the fees. I just say that it's, it's, it, it is going up for people because they're going to pay more than they've been paying.
All right, folks, it's getting late here and I think these discussions are not changing our decision, so. And I, I do see a hand up in the audience. I'm sorry, this is not a time for public comment, so. Anyway, do we have a, here, okay, so Barbara?
So what I will then say is, the committee is, as I said, will be at our December 9th meeting, talking about the enforcement hours. We'll, we'll be looking at a draft of the ordinance. There are things in the ordinance, in the code, in the parking section that need to be cleaned up regardless of where we ended up tonight. The section on meters was needed cleaning up, and Solicitor Walco's already started on that. So we'll be looking at an ordinance. So after our December 9th meeting, we'll have a better sense of when we would be coming to council with an ordinance for you to consider for advertisement, but we certainly hope that's, you know, not that far off. So just to give you a heads up.
Hey, Fred, can I ask, if we're just talking about ordinance, you know, given all the time that the parking committee has spent, and it sounds like we've come to conclusion, is this something that we could just punt to John Walco and say, clean this up? The office could at some point do the two-hour zones? I mean, unless the parking committee feels like, no, we really want to continue to meet, it, it kind of feels like the substance has been met and perhaps we can pass this off to John now.
I'm in a position, I'm taking notes. I can put together a close enough draft ordinance, and I'm hoping to do that by December 9th to have as a talking points issues that need to be hashed out. For example, I can leave reference as to when the two-hour enforcement, which would be for further discussion. I, I did go through, and again, I, I need to get more information as to, for example, parking meters. I don't know with the new app, whether there's also going to be kiosks, if the kiosk can give a receipt, we have to have a receipt on the dashboard, like, there's little details that I need more information on parking meters as well. But it's going to be significantly, and what I've already tried to shorten up. So I, I will be in a position by December 9th to have a, a working draft ordinance for committee discussion. But there's still going to need to be discussions.
Yeah, I, I, sorry.
I'll say, I, I agree. I think you've made enough changes and this is a big enough piece that I think you would benefit from the committee looking at it. Barbara, I mean, if you want.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. And I, I think that the committee needs to weigh in on what the enforcement period should be. I think that, you know, it, there'll be some things that we want to talk about in considering that. So I, I think it makes sense, Cindy. I'm not suggesting that the committee is going to go on for months and months and months after this. I just think it makes sense for us to take care of the last bits of this so that there's, it's not, council doesn't have to have great big long meetings discussing where things are on, on details.
And, and the who and how of opting out, because I think we really have to work that out. How that works, that's important.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that one of the last substantive things the Parking Committee needs to talk about, you know, is what that opt-in and opt-out process, a little more definition on that.
Yep, that's on the, that's on the list for the 9th too.
I know this is late, but this is, this is just one night later. Suppose, suppose, okay, you were to say to everyone in the borough who's in regulated parking, this is your, this is from, this is the year where you opt-in, not rather than opt-out. But basically, if we don't hear from you by the end of the year, not the end of this year, by the end of next year, you are automatically opted out. So, so actually, put it back to the residents because I think maybe, like, they've forgotten why. Like, why we have these rules. I feel like we're not, I don't really have a desire to impose parking rules and fees and fines and all this. It's like, not something we really want to do. But it is something that over the years, like, actually becomes a major need if it's not happening. And so I, I kind of wonder like, is that, would that be a thing we could do reasonably? Like, just say, look, these, these rules are in place until the end of the year. Unless we hear from your community that you want to keep them, they're going to disappear in 2024. That's, that, is that too fancy?
Can I throw my cynical add-on for example?
Yeah.
I know, I'm always, I'm always good for that at council meetings. The, my fear of how it will play out, based on how I've seen public comment play on other things, is for certain portions of the borough, we wouldn't hear anything all year. And then once the parking was no longer being enforced, then we would suddenly hear, "Why did you do this? You didn't tell me and, and I need this and all that." That's my cynical take on it. I totally get where you're coming from because I think you're right. I think there, I think if we force people to opt out, there is a potential, there are people who would be fine with opting out, that just aren't going to want to go through like the, you know, the hassle of going through the opt-out process. But I guess I would also fear that if we went the other direction with it, I don't know. I mean, I guess we could always, for people who are like, well, I do still want it, we could just, you know, put it back in place once we've made that change. I don't.
Maybe it's just a thought experiment. It's just something I wanted to bring up so we would think about it that like, that way. It's like, like there's traffic engineers who have discovered that if you take all the street signs away, all the navigation signs, the stop signs, the one-way signs, you take them all away, you actually have safer communities because people drive more carefully. You know, it's that kind of idea.
No, I mean, to your point, yeah, not to belabor this too much long, but yeah, like, boroughs that don't have a line painted out, but people drive slower on.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's that kind of idea. All right. Interesting idea. Okay. All right, I think that is it for policy. Does anyone have comments for the other council? All right, so we are going to adjourn and we're going to have an executive session, discuss a personnel matter regarding the evaluations of administrative staff, a litigation matter related to 198 Elwood, and another litigation matter with regard to a borough contractor. And we will not resume after the adjournment. So, I have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
For a second. Okay, all those in favor of adjourned? All right, thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night.